Welcome, everybody. And welcome to another online town hall meeting with MP Paul Manley. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are coming to you from the traditional unceded territory of the Tsunamal First Nations, and that the writing of Nanaimo Lady Smith includes the unceded territories of Steminus, Snanalis, and Lyax in First Nations as well. And I'd like to thank Lori for moderating the YouTube chat. For anybody who wants to ask a question, please put it in the chat and Lori will pass it to me and I will pass it to Paul. Please be respectful of others and friendly on the chat and respectful of Lori. And be polite, because it's better to be polite even if we disagree. And now I'll pass things over to Paul.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, Alan. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I'm coming for you from the traditional territory of the First Nation, and it's an honour and privilege to serve the communities within the traditional territories, the unceded territories of Snanalis, Steminus, and Lyax. We know from recent news, the horrific news coming out of all of these residential schools where they're doing research that the process of reconciliation is all that much more dire and in our faces as Canadians. We need to do everything that we can to make things right. And we've known, people that have been paying attention and listening to the elders and listening to communities and listening to survivors, that there was going to be a day when we started to learn about burial sites, because the Truth and Reconciliation Commission had said that there were three and a half, four thousand burial sites at these residential schools. And now we know at Penellicott that there are 160 unmarked graves, at least 160. And Penellicott, formerly Cooper Island Residential School, is a place where people from all over Vancouver Island and the Lower Mainland and BC would go. So I have met elders who are survivors of that school, who are from Snanalis, from Steminus, and from Lyax. And we need to stand in solidarity with those survivors and with First Nations communities as they go through this horrific process of bringing some level of closure for these children that were lost, for the communities that lost their children, for the families that lost these children. It's unbelievable that we would have burial sites at a school. It's unfathomable that this would have happened, that children were dying at these schools. They weren't sent home, their bodies weren't sent home to their communities, and many people didn't know what happened to these children. They just were taken to residential school, to these institutions, really. There aren't schools. They were a way of killing the Indian in the child. That was the the modus operandi, the reason for these institutions. And right here in Nanaimo, too, we also have the legacy and the history of the Indian Hospital. The Nanaimo Indian Hospital was one of, I think, 22 or 23 Indian hospitals that were run by the federal government, and this one was run by the federal government on DND land, right beside VIU. That DND land, there is a specific claim for that land from Steminus that that land be repatriated to the First Nation and added as an addition to reserve. But we know that this Indian hospital ran there from the late 40s to the early 70s. And in one of the films that I did for the Holcaminum Health Hub, I did interviews with elders about healthcare, and it was a film for cultural safety in the healthcare system to train doctors and medical professionals, professionals in the College and District Hospital and here in Nanaimo. And I interviewed elders, and you know, some elders went to the hospital there. They were given medicine, they were released, they went home, they got better. But many had horrific experiences there, and there are stories of people going to that hospital that were just never seen again. And so there will be a search of those lands as well, because there are suspected unmarked graves on that site as well. And this is something that all of us in the settler community need to come to terms with. We need to stand in solidarity with our Indigenous brothers and sisters and work with them through the trauma of this tragedy and historic genocide, this atrocity that has happened to Indigenous people in this country. So we have a lot of work to do. And it begins right here in our own community. It begins in our personal relationships, community to community. The opposite of hate is love, and we need to show love and respect for the Holcaminum people in whose territories we reside, live, work, and play.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, so I think a good way to transition from that is actually to speak about the hopeful events that you took part in and I accompanied you to on Canada Day this year. It wasn't like other Canada Days, so maybe you could just touch on that and then we'll go into some of the parliamentary work. Parliamentary work that you've been doing and other work that you've been doing. What did you do on Canada Day?
Canada Day, well, I phoned around to see what was happening in different communities, and I was talking to Chief Harris at Steminus. And she invited me to go down and celebrate with their grad class, to celebrate the brilliance of their students and their achievements. And so there was a number of students, I think, 20-some who had graduated from high school and a number, another nine, I think, that graduated from university. And so we went to Steminus that morning, decorated cars, and the Oyster Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department was out. The RCMP gave us an escort, the RCMP, the new liaison officer, very friendly fellow, put an orange stripe on his car. And we drove around the community and they set the sirens off and let people know we were coming, and people came out of their houses and cheered on their grads, and that was a lot of fun for the morning. And then we went to Orange Shirt Day on the Bay at Snanalis, which was a great event. And that was put on by Tyler Bob and a number of other people that helped out with that, so there's entertainment all day long, different musicians playing. There was salmon barbecue, there was other food, and it was just a sea of orange shirts. And because they had a limited number of people they could allow in, at one point, there was a long line of orange shirts waiting to get into that event. And this is a reflection of really what happened across Canada when Canadians came out in droves, in huge numbers, in all of our big cities, in Toronto and Montreal and Ottawa and Vancouver, Victoria, in orange shirts to show solidarity with Indigenous people and in recognition of the genocide and the atrocities that were committed against them. And to stand with them, to say that we're here, we have to do what's right. We have to correct this historic injustice. So it was a great day, Canada Day.
Yeah, it was a great day. I was really happy to be able to accompany you to those events. And it was really amazing seeing all the pride in Steminus for the grads. And yeah, an Orange Shirt Day down by the bay was really amazing. That was, I think, like one of the most fun events that I've had since the start of COVID. And it was great to just see like so many different people from the community, from Snanalis and from outside who came to Snanalis celebrating together and having a meaningful time together that was acknowledged. You know, some of that, like, that didn't just paper over some of the pain and the darker sides of our history. So let's go into some of the work that you did. So when did Parliament rise? Parliament's in summer recess now. When did it rise and what was the last month of Parliament like?
Well, it rose June 23rd. That was our last day. And the last month of Parliament before the summer recess is called the silly season. It's called that for a reason. We start sitting till midnight Eastern time. And I was here, so I would be on Zoom starting 10 o'clock Eastern or 7:00 AM on Zoom and right through till 10:00 or 11:00. Some nights, we thought, some nights, we would be going for late votes, like on the Budget Implementation Act, Bill C30. We could have seen votes for different parts of that bill go through and force through, and in the past, there have been votes that have lasted until 10:00 in the morning the next day. The latest I've ever had to vote was during when we were working on the COVID relief legislation back last September. I was up till 3:00 in the morning voting in Ottawa. But yeah, so there's late night sittings. The Conservatives were busy trying to block the Liberal agenda as much as possible, so they had dilatory motions, the motions just to block things that they would use so that we couldn't debate the bills that were on the dock for debate that the government was trying to get through. There was filibustering in committees, so in committees, there's no limit to the amount of time you can speak. And filibustering is just a process of talking and talking and talking until you run the clock out. And so there was, you know, like hour-long talking sessions. And I was, you know, in one of those committees, it was being filibustered quite a bit, which was for the Broadcasting Act, Bill C10, in the Heritage Committee. Other committees, so the Conservatives do it to stop legislation, the Liberals were doing it to stop inquiries into scandals, you know, like there was a lot of things that the opposition parties had voted to look into, and we all voted together to look into what the government was up to. And so those things then were in committee process and the Liberals would filibuster in there, so we didn't, those things didn't go forward at all. So a number of committees really were stalled in the kind of work they had. With Bill C10, we had a motion to push it through the Broadcasting Act. And then that meant that we couldn't actually, you know, talk about the amendments to the bill. So it all seemed like we were just voting on numbers and all of those amendments, you don't see them, you don't understand what they are until you debate them in committee. They're confidential until that point. And so then we had to re-bring that back into the House of Commons and debate that. And so there were some long, long days of debate, blocking lots of votes. So, you know, there'll be a motion to, you know, read a report, to concur in a report. And the Conservatives would put up a speaker, and then the Liberals would say, okay, now we move to adjourn this debate. And then we would have 30 minutes of bells, and then we would have a vote.
What does bells mean?
Bells is just a warning system. So you just get, on parliamentary Zoom, the bells just ring, and in the House of Commons precinct, and in my office in Confederation Building, there's a bell that rings, it just dings and it runs for 30 minutes and it warns MPs that you have a vote, you got to get to the House of Commons. Now we have an app on our phones that we can use for voting, and it's got 3D facial recognition. So when you vote, it takes a lot less time than normal in the standing vote that they have in the House of Commons.
All right, well, thanks for that. So there is a first question in the chat. I want to encourage people to put questions into the chat and we will get to them. And the first question actually is relating, we're going to talk about some bills that the government was trying to get through before the summer recess. And the first question actually relates to the first bill that we wanted to talk about. The question is from Chris in the chat. "With this record-breaking heat, the new normal?", question mark. "We're very concerned about deforestation and desertification. What steps will the federal government take to help mitigate and adapt to this?" And so that can tie into a discussion, if you have stuff to share about Bill C12, the Climate Accountability Act.
So to start with, I wouldn't call it the new normal, because this is not going to be normal. It's going to continue to get worse and accelerate unless we do something really drastically right now. And that means making difficult decisions, hard decisions, and taking concrete action. Now, Bill C12, we just had passed in the House of Commons, that's the Climate Accountability Act, and it is anything but accountable. The accountability in that act is that if you don't like the actions that the government has taken, you can vote that government out in the next election. That's not accountability, that's what we already have. And so, you know, there were other like other pieces of legislation and other laws in other countries that we should have been working on emulating and copying. So in the UK, they have a carbon budget law. All governments are bound by that law. New governments voted in, they have to abide by that law, they have to meet the targets. And New Zealand has a similar law. The there's a centre in Columbia University that deals with climate law and legislation that Elizabeth May had tried to connect the Environment Minister with and the committee with, and was rebuffed. She tried to get scientists into the committee to testify. So Bill C12 has passed, but it's a very weak piece of legislation. And you know, there's an advisory panel, but it's not made up of just scientists. There's all kinds of other people that are involved with it, good people. Don't get me wrong, but what we need is to be taking direction from scientists. We need to just be following what the science tells us. And that, and that alone, like, we're going to have to make hard decisions, like banning fracking, like ending the cutting of old growth forests, like eliminating natural gas in new construction, like they're doing over in Vancouver. You know, eliminating
Fossil fuel subsidies.
Eliminating fossil fuel subsidies, stop building pipelines, stop, you know, funding pipelines, stop approving pipelines. So, you know, during the process of bringing this bill to committee, there was a lot of really disappointing behaviour on the part of the Liberal and NDP members of the committee. Elizabeth May brought some really good amendments forward. Those amendments, like, the other thing, too, with the problem with the process was that all kinds of information came in after the deadline for amendments. So this was a bill long overdue. We declared a climate emergency in the House of Commons back in June 2019. So a year and a half later, in November, they finally tabled Bill C12. It's not a very complex bill at all. And then they took forever to debate it. So we didn't debate it until March, and we debated it a little bit then. And then we waited until May before it came back again, and then there was a big rush to get it done. And it was so rushed that, you know, we were getting information from experts after the amendments were due, and we were hearing from witnesses and experts in the committee process after all the amendments were due. So you couldn't take into consideration what was being said. There were no Indigenous witnesses at the committee stage, there was no youth representation, and there were no scientists. And so it was missing, you know, huge components to be able to take into consideration what we needed in this bill. At one point, it was like the NDP and the Liberals blocked every one of Elizabeth May's amendments, the Green Party amendments. And at one point, one of those amendments actually, because it was the exact same wording as a government amendment, when you get your amendment in first, that's the first one to be debated. It comes in in the order of precedence and you debate in that order. So the government had put in an amendment the same as the one that Elizabeth had put in. The NDP and the Liberals defeated that amendment and then realized, oh, that means the government amendment is defeated too, and it's the exact same language, and we wanted that. And that was to have action plans put into place 10 years before the next target date. So then if the target date is 2035, the action plan to meet that target had to be in place by 2025. So that was defeated, but they scrambled around for an hour to try to figure out how they could bring that amendment back. So they tried to say, well, how about we say nine years and 365 days? No, that's too close. It's the same as 10 years. Well, how about nine years and 366 days? So now when you look at Bill C12 and that piece of legislation, and you wonder, why is it nine years and 366 days rather than 10 years? Why is it 10 years plus a day? Well, that's why, because they were in their eagerness to block every other good piece addition to that Climate Accountability Act. They threw the baby out with the bathwater. It was just ridiculous. And so it's a weak piece of legislation. We do need to take serious action now, like our house is on fire. You know, I was just out mountain biking the other day through, you know, one of our managed forests, tree farm, and there was trees out there that are 10, 15 years old that were all dying. You know, so this plan to plant 2 billion trees by the federal government doesn't make sense if we're going to log off our old growth forests to do that. That's ridiculous. We need to protect the existing biodiversity and our old growth forests. And Change Our Forest Practices Act, that's a provincial issue, but I seconded a motion to ban the use of glyphosate in, I seconded a private members' bill to ban the use of glyphosate in Canada, because it's used as an aerial spray in the interior to kill off broadleaf trees. The Forest Act says you can only have 5% of those trees. Well, those trees are fire resistant. And aspen and cottonwood in the interior and birch, they're all fire resistant. You see those trees survive these wildfires. And instead, we're creating monoculture forests where fires just rip right on through pine, fir, cedar, all of these, you know, coniferous trees. And we do the same thing on the coast. Alder and maple don't burn well green. You know, they don't. So these trees, we need a mixed forest. It's a more fire-resistant forest. There's a lot of things we have to do, we have to do it right away to deal with this emergency.
So before we move on from this topic, another question just came up, and I think it relates to the you've signed a support for ecocide, for an ecocide bill. The question is from OgopogoHunter69 asking, "Ecosystems and threatened species need legal protection. Is there a chance a bill could pass and enforcement insured? I'd like to see it become illegal to cut old growth, for example."
So there's an international movement right now, and I'm part of this ecocide alliance of parliamentarians who want to change the Rome Statute, or put an addition into the Rome Statute for international law, and include ecocide as a law. And that would mean the intentional destruction of ecological systems and life forms and make that punishable crime, and for governments, to hold governments' account, to hold corporations to account. We've seen other jurisdictions do this, where they actually protect rivers. They protect the biodiversity in a much better way. And we're, you know, we're working on a program like that. We do have the Canada's Nature Legacy, which is to preserve 30% of the land base and 30% of the marine base by 2030 through a number of initiatives, and I was talking to the RDN about this the other day, because municipalities and regional governments can do this to to secure green belts, to protect biodiversity, protect recreational areas, and also Indigenous protected and conserved areas is another part of that that I've been talking to the local First Nations about. And this is a process that they have to initiate, it has to be led by them, but Indigenous protected and conserved areas, IPCAs, are like a form of regional sustainable development. And it's based on traditional teachings and traditional ways of doing land management. Because traditionally, Indigenous people didn't think about parks as no-go zones where you can't hunt, you can't fish, you can't gather berries or cut down a few trees. And other areas like industrial zones where you could just do everything, like decimate the forest, dig up the dirt, hunt all the species out. They look at a more balanced approach where you take what you need from an ecosystem and you ensure that that ecosystem remains viable for future generations. And that's the approach behind Indigenous protected and conserved areas. One of the things I've been talking to about First Nations as well, and to the Regional District, is that this July 20th is the 150th year, we're marking an anniversary that British Columbia joined Confederation. When we joined Confederation, we had a railway promised to link the railway to all the capitals. So that was the INN land grant to, for Robert Dunsmere to build a railway between Nanaimo and Esquimalt. He got 8,000 square kilometres of southeast coast of Vancouver Island, $750,000. And so from Campbell River inland, up, you know, to the line that runs down Strathcona Park, all the way to Jordan River and Suk and all that area, all through here, all of this is all private forest lands because of that land grant. And it means that it's hard for implementing, respecting the pre-Confederation treaties, the Treaty of 1854 with Steminus, but also to implement modern-day treaties, because there's no crown land to negotiate. It's all private forest land. And so part of that Nature Legacy initiative, too, is also something that Mosaic could get involved in, because there is a process for setting aside private lands as part of the Nature Legacy project. And so this is something I'd like to see, especially for the Nanaimo River watershed, which has very little protected areas or recreational areas that are preserved. 750 square kilometre watershed, less than two square kilometres or park, just under 11 square kilometres are conserved areas, and that's the estuary and a couple of mountaintops for Vancouver Island marmots. So lots we can do on protecting local biodiversity and local action on climate change. So much we can do and so much we have to do, and so much we have to do rapidly.
Yeah, I actually have some of the slides of your presentation. And maybe actually really quickly, before we move away from this subject, I can just show how much of our of our watershed is not protected in comparison to the Cowichin. So what are we seeing here, Paul?
That, so the black line there, that is the Nanaimo River watershed area, the 750 square kilometres. And you see along the river, it shows you the different activities. This is a recreational map that was put together by the Regional District and shows you swimming holes and you know, different activities there. So, and this shows you what areas are owned by Warehouser, I mean, by Island Timberlands in Timber West and managed by Mosaic. So in the past, it was Warehouser. And then on this one, you could see on the Cowichin River, there's a number of provincial and regional parks, and they just, the provincial government just bought another chunk of land to add to the provincial parks along the Cowichin River. We don't have anything on the Nanaimo River. Why is it that the provincial government continues to ignore this region? You know, when we should be having maps that look like that as well, like for protected and conserved areas. And provincial parks, you know, like, these need to be worked in connection with Indigenous communities and First Nations. And these should be done in a way that's respectful, but right now, we have development on the river, and the last little part of the Cooverden properties is up for sale, lot 11, $850,000. It is, you know, it's it's going to make it difficult to go to that, the chunk of regional park that's kind of around that. And so this is what I was talking to the RDN about, that the Nature Legacy Fund for municipalities could be used to protect some of these areas, some of these important areas.
Yeah, so the last thing I'll show before we move on is just the slide of the INN Yeah. So the last thing I'll show before we move on is just the slide of the E N N land grant, which was a twenty percent of Vancouver Island were privatized and that in one fell swoop there.
Yeah, for a railway, it doesn't run anymore.
Yeah. And if you and if you consider that that's all private, that that pretty much all became private forestry land. And then you look at how well almost exactly that tracks to this map of the worst drought levels on Vancouver Island.
Yeah, it also it corresponds, it corresponds to
To populations.
But also to the to the ridgeline that divides the the east coast and the west coast of Vancouver Island. So, you know, the west coast of Vancouver Island gets a lot more moisture. It was the one place during the heat wave where he you could get some cool weather.
But yeah, so we we have another couple of questions about watersheds before we move on from this. And Vic and Bronwyn want to know, why can why can the watershed not be expropriated? And Sheila wants to know, is there a valid legal argument for the government to expropriate the land sold long ago to forestry companies?
Land can be expropriated, but you need to pay a fair market value for it. And I think that, you know, in terms of because, you know, this isn't Robert Dunsmere's family that owns this anymore. Dunsmere sold it and he sold it was sold again. It was parceled up and sold and sold. And now that, you know, this is owned by timber companies that are are owned by pension funds. And so it just makes it more more complicated. But I do think that that there is a willingness on the part of these forest companies to work with the government to, you know, they're an asset and assets are bought and sold. And there there could be agreements made with the regional district. There there could be purchase agreements where the federal and provincial governments come in and the watershed could be, you know, an indigenous protected and conserved area there where they're working in partnership with the R D N to ensure that the the watershed grows back to a natural state. Because that is, if you see my film Troubled Water, that is what the Victoria watershed, the capital regional district, the Sioux watershed, what they've done, they turned, they stopped logging in the early nineties, they let it grow back to a natural state. The rain falls down, hits the forest, it, you know, trickles down, hits the the bushes and into the moss. All slows down, so you don't get the erosion. It soaks into the grounds, held by the roots and then filtered by that natural forest and then released over the summer months, the hot summer months. And so you have better retention of water. You don't need to spend all the money on filtration plants and everything else. So it is what we need to be going back to. And that is actually, it's a it's a model that was developed in Britain to protect watersheds for watershed conservation. And those watersheds, the Nanaimo watershed, it used to have a stamp on it that on the map that said it was a no logging zone. All that changed when H R McMillan became the first forestry minister in British Columbia. He removed all of those stamps. And if you're wondering where that name H R McMillan might be familiar to to you is McMillan Blodel, which was a massive logging company here in British Columbia and and he owned it. And quietly removed all of those protected designations on community drinking watersheds on on the east coast of Vancouver Island and elsewhere.
So regulatory capture is not a new phenomenon.
No, goes back to way back.
Okay, so we're going to move on to another to another bill. We'll come back if there's other questions relating to to climate and stuff like that. We will we will come back to those. But Bill C ten, the Broadcasting Act. So this is a bill that's that's been in the media quite a bit. It's it's also been on social media quite a bit. There's quite a lot of controversy. And and yeah, why why don't you tell us like, what are the issues? Are some people believe that now any social media post that they make that is political in nature will go through some government office that's going to approve it or the C R T C is going to approve it or 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 Prime Minister Trudeau himself will have a staffer who will sift through the the political posts. But not not to make a joke. I mean, free speech is a real thing. And what are what are what is what are the issues with Bill C ten? Does it infringe on our free speech? Does it threaten our political free speech? And is this something that you care about?
So this, actually, this bill was really interesting for me to work on because it was an update to the Broadcasting Act, which is long overdue. The last time the Broadcasting Act was updated was in nineteen ninety three by the Mulroney Conservative Government. That original Broadcasting Act, and this part has not changed, in section one point three, it says that the act cannot infringe on freedom of expression, journalistic expression or creative expression. So those things were all protected in the original act and protected in the new act. And the new act actually actually specifies that social media content is also protected for freedom of expression. Now, the the superior law of the land is our constitution and our Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And the Charter of Rights and Freedoms is, you know, tells us we have freedom of expression. And so any any laws or legislation that conflict with the Charter of Rights and Freedoms or the Constitution can be deemed unconstitutional by the courts and struck down by the courts. And so when governments create legislation, they have to get a review of that by the Justice Department to make sure that it's that it's constitution constitutional. So freedom of expression is not impinged upon at all in this act. And and part of the problem with going through this process, I put forward twenty nine amendments to this bill. It was deeply flawed. There was a hundred and twenty amendments to the bill. Some of the amendments that I put in ensured that the community element is recognized in the Broadcasting Act. So C H L Y here in the Nanaimo will now is now recognized in the act as the community element. Because that is a key component to to broadcasting, the nonprofit broadcasters. So two of my amendments passed with without any change and two of them passed with sub amendments. Some of my amendments, I I got them in after other parties, so they were very similar to other amendments. And when those amendments passed mine or failed, mine was knocked off the docket as well. So a number of amendments that I did put forward were also passed because other parties had put those through. So this bill right now is it's before the Senate, it hasn't, the Senate has adjourned for the summer. So it may die on the order paper. It will definitely die on the order paper if an election is called. So that's any bills that have not received royal assent, that means that they've gone through the House of Commons and the Senate. If the Senate has an amendment to a bill, it has to go back to the House of Commons again to be voted on to approve those amendments before it gets royal assent. So the this this was really interesting for me just because I've I've been a professional musician. I've had artist management companies and signed you know, record deals with multinational record companies, national record companies, Atlantic Records in the United States, Ricoh in London, England. I've licensed music and films to broadcasters here in Canada and around the world. And I've I've used the system for determining what Canadian content is. So for music, it's maple is the music music artist performance or production and the lyrics. And if you get two of those things, so the the music is and the artist, the music's written by a Canadian, the artist is a Canadian, Canadian content. So the maple system. And then there's a a scoring system for for films and television where you get a number of points for the the director for the actors, for key creative positions like director of photography, musical score, et cetera, right? And you need you need six out of ten points to be able to get Canadian content. And there was a lot of debate that was in 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 this, like filibustering where the conservatives kept on going, well, how do you tell if it's Canadian content? I don't know if it's Canadian content. How do you tell? So I would send them the links to to determine for maple for the for music and for Cavco for television and film, because I've done those things. It's very simple. It's an accusation based thing, like they don't, there's nobody auditing to figure out whether it's Canadian content or not. And the idea was to actually bring the online platforms and bring the online world into the Broadcasting Act. But it doesn't really regulate, you know, online very much at all. Like the the key the key things that it does with online undertakings or online broadcasters is that that allows the C R T C to ask them about certain financial or commercial information, information related to programming, information related to expenditures, information related to audience measurement, other than information that could be could identify individual audience members and other information related to the provision of the broadcasting service. And then they wanted to make sure that Canadian content was discoverable. So we have a system, CanCon in Canada, where we have bands that have been huge in Canada, like the Tragically Hip. Big in Canada, they never made it in the United States. They made it here because of CanCon regulations made the commercial broadcasters play a certain percentage of Canadian content on the radio shows. And so we had bands that made it here in Canada that tragically didn't make it in the United States. And that's also true of a lot of television production. You know, A P T N is a really good example, the Aboriginal People's Television Network, of something I was fighting for in the act to make sure that that small niche broadcasters and small production companies can get their their programs recognized as Canadian content so that it's discoverable by other Canadians who want to see Canadian Canadian shows. And A P T N is a great example of a television station that that helps to revitalize language and culture and an understanding, greater understanding of indigenous people in this country. And so they should be discoverable on on the system.
So I watched a video by by an M P, a conservative M P, I'm not going to name their name. But they were they were basically telling their viewers that that the government is coming to to regulate free speech. And they even went so far as to say, this might be the last time you see me on Facebook or on YouTube because the government might decide to deplatform me and to take away my ability to to broadcast to you. So make sure you do something. And so what was what was behind that, would you say?
Well, that was a that was a great fundraising effort on the part of the conservatives. And a and a great way to actually just create this like Trump style of obfuscation of the truth, like just straight out bamboozling people about what the truth was, because actually the conservatives could see the amendments that were coming and knew that things were going to be dealt with. But but the there was two things. One, in one section of the act, it says, social media users are exempt from the act. They're exempt. But there was another section that said, social, the content of social media users is not exempt from the act. And that was what they were going after. But later on in in the in the legislation, it says that the that the government cannot legislate things that don't have an impact on the broadcasting system. So a social media post does not have an impact on the broadcasting system. So they couldn't regulate that. And and what the the commission is regulating is those things that I talked about. They want to know, they want the online companies who are broadcasting into Canada and actually selling advertisements to Canadians based on, you know, their content, they're not paying any taxes in this country. They're not putting money into Canadian content, the way that other broadcasters have to, like Global and C T V and C B C. So they wanted to, you know, the idea was to level the playing field so that those, you know, YouTube and Amazon Prime, we're actually putting money into the system. Now, you can't force them to play Canadian content. The Disney Channel is not going to play Canadian content. But what you can do is get them to pay their fair share for broadcasting to Canadians. So if Canadians are using that service, finally, now people, you know, there's G S T on that. But there should be, they should be paying taxes for, you know, for what they're the business that they do in this country, right? You got a foreign multinational doing business in Canada. Should they be paying taxes like the rest of us? Well, absolutely. If, you know, that these Trump style tactics tactics are really dangerous and divisive. And they, you know, they make our communities less safe, both online and offline. And there was a lot of fear mongering that went around with Bill C ten that once the whole act was read in Parliament and people could see it, the experts dissecting it said, yeah, no, freedom of speech is isn't a problem in this act, you know, so that was all over.
Yeah, we'll move on to another question. Lisa in the chat asks an unrelated question. M Ps have shown that legislative business can be conducted online. Is there any chance that in the future, as we as we move past COVID, MPs might travel less and thus save taxpayer dollars, save greenhouse gas emissions, meet their constituents more and stuff like that? What are your thoughts about that?
I would actually like to see these changes put into practice permanently. And this is especially true for, you know, for MPs that live a long distance from the House of Commons. So on a good trip, I, you know, it's eight hours gate to gate for me and plus the time to to get into Ottawa, like to my apartment or get home here. And you also see MPs drag themselves into the House of Commons when they're getting treatment for cancer, for all kinds of different medical issues. And they're just, you know, like they're on on close to death's door and they're dragging themselves into vote. Well, now we have an app that allows us to do that. And there's no reason why we shouldn't still be able to continue to do that. You'll also notice that, like, budget wise, a lot of taxpayer dollars was was saved on travel from MPs. And of course, there's all those greenhouse gas emissions as well from flying across the country. And as an MP, I was coming home on weekends because you know, people expect to see you in the community, to show up at community events. And so that, you know, I would leave the House of Commons at the end of the session and be on a flight, getting late and really only have have like thirty six hours on the ground. Off the plane and back on the plane, thirty six hours. And so a lot of MPs with young families and and you know, some are single parents, a lot of other considerations that people need to, we should be thinking about in terms of making this job more accessible to to more people, because we need we need more diverse representation. We need more young people in in the House of Commons. You know, we need people that, not just those that can afford to to, you know, take time away from their communities and families or be bombing back and forth. It's also like really unhealthy. So, yeah, I'd love to see those, some of these changes implemented permanently. I do love being in the House of Commons to debate, though, I'll tell you, like, it's preferable than talking to my my Zoom camera.
Yeah, I can definitely see the more remote, remote Parliament participation, increasing opportunities for more people to seek to seek election. It just, it does just make it more accessible for more people. And so so we don't, because otherwise, you know, you end up with with a pretty potentially classist House of Commons and the House of Commons where a lot of people are older because they're they're kind of they're past the stage of having young kids and stuff like that. So yeah, but we're going to move forward. Bill C fifteen, the the under bill, the the bill to to bring the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People into Canadian federal law. Can you talk about that bill? What does it mean that you see at this stage and how you voted and so on? Um what does it mean that, did you see at this stage and how you voted and so on?
So um Bill C fifteen, the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, it was number forty-three of the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action. Uh the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People is something that had been worked on for decades. Uh Canada was late uh signing this and signing on, but now Canada has signed on to this declaration. And what this bill means is that we um uh need to implement into Canadian laws. So the, the summary of the act, it says this from enactment provides that the Government of Canada must take all measures necessary to ensure that the laws of Canada are consistent with the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People and must prepare and implement an action plan to achieve the objectives of the declaration. So that's um, it's a really important piece of of legislation and it's there's a lot of stuff that needs to be um undone and fixed in this country. And one of those is the Indian Act. It's a racist piece of legislation that uh has been amended a few times, but really is still, still full of uh it's, it's a colonial piece of legislation. It's, it's full of things that, you know, basically make indigenous people wards of the state. And um this act, um Bill C fifteen, the uh the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People will help to unwind this process. And thus, that process needs to be indigenous-led. It needs to be um uh in full consultation. And that doesn't mean uh we're talking to you and then just doing what we want. It means our consultation and a process, uh a respectful process where the, those considerations are all worked out at the table uh moving forward, so.
Okay, we have a question that takes us back a little bit. I mean, we, we, you covered a lot about C ten. So I don't, I don't think we want to go back into the weeds of C ten, but Dennis did ask about the discoverability with Canadian music that um local and independent radio stations like college stations, which we have one in this town, it would benefit from charitable nonprofit status. Any idea why this isn't permitted?
That's a really good question, actually. Um one of the, one of the things that I, in my amendments was to to name this community element. I was the only one that actually got up and defended the community element in, in um all of my amendments to, to do everything that the, the uh, the um college radio organizations and the Cactus, uh Canadian Association of Community Television users and subscribers that those that represent the, the um, the community element had asked for, I put forward all of those amendments. And one of those was to, to specifically call it nonprofit. And there should be something so people can make charitable donations to keep these, these um community element, both radio and television and online, uh nonprofit media outlets um funded. You know, like, there's also just a problem with their charitable status. You know, like, the, the, the way charitable donations uh are given um you know, tax credits is not a very good system. The best tax credits are don- for donating to political parties. You know, you can get up to seventy-five percent in tax credit to donate to a political party. But, you know, the, the, the donation, your first two hundred dollar donation, I think it's fifteen percent you get as a tax credit. And then after two hundred dollars, you get thirty percent. And that's just why, that's completely unacceptable. Like, we have nonprofit charitable organizations that are doing the work the government has abandoned. You know, taking care of the, of uh people in poverty, taking care of, of uh youth. There's so many good nonprofit organizations, uh charitable organizations in this community that are working to feed people, to work, working to uh help with housing, to work on a whole range of issues that the government has really dropped the ball on.
All right, well, before go ahead. Okay, um before we go into um some of the motions that you brought forward, we had a question from Mylin. Uh time is of the essence to address the climate, climate change crisis. Can we provide support to our forestry-dependent communities to transition into a sustainable, knowledge-based economy? And I think the same can be asked about uh about communities that are, that are based on, on fossil fuel extraction and other destructive uh sort of um e- economic uh development.
Yeah, so we needed, we need a just transition for workers. And there was the promise of a Just Transition Act in this last parliament. We never saw it. You know, one of the, one of the things about the forest industry here is that it was all too old for old growth forests. So the mills were all too old for old growth. And and um those mills should have been retooled for second and third growth um rather than having to rely on continuing to cut old growth trees in order to have a, a forest industry, which is just, you know, it's, it's crazy. So we see a lot of raw logs that are exported, uh second-growth logs. Um and part of that is their, the capacity for mills to deal with uh second growth. So it's about retooling, it's about reworking our forest industry. It's also about eliminating the amount of waste uh in, in uh forestry and, and be more strategic about the use of those resources. So, you know, IKEA, Swedish for common sense, right? They don't, they don't ship off raw logs, they don't ship off dimensional lumber. They ship off boxes of furniture that you have to assemble in your home. And I know it's frustrating for many of us to try to put that stuff together, but that is, you know, a model that we should have been looking at. We should have been really, you know, we've had decades of doing this, too. I was involved in, in the days of, of fighting to protect Carmanau, Walbrand and Blackwood. And we were saying, we need value-added manufacturing. Every stick of wood in this province should have as many jobs attached to it as possible. So no exporting raw stuff off, no cutting, you know, old growth trees into uh dimensional lumber. That's ridiculous. You know, if you're gonna take down an old growth tree, then you should use it to make, you know, ten thousand or twenty thousand guitars. Right? And then, and then, and that should be one tree uh in a forest a year or something, you know, like that. That's specific for those, those uses. We can make dimensional lumber out of second-growth and third-growth trees. And we, we do need a plan. This is all provincial, by the way, but, you know, the federal government has a role to try to work through this stuff with the provinces because of climate change and because of the crash in biodiversity. And part of our problem in this country is our federalist system is, is really dysfunctional. And we saw that with COVID, where each province had different rules. And we see that with climate change, where, you know, as we work towards our targets, we had the Copenhagen target uh that was established by the Harvard government in two thousand and nine to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by seventeen percent over two thousand and five, five levels by twenty twenty. So when twenty twenty came around, eight provinces and three territories had met the target, really close to meeting the target. Eighty-five percent of the population did their part. But two provinces increased their emissions so much that they blew all of that work out of the water. And so we basically flatlined. Our emissions in twenty twenty were the same as they were in twenty two thousand and five. And it, and it was all the oil and gas industry in Alberta and Saskatchewan. And now, of course, British Columbia has joined that club by, you know, subsidizing fracking, uh subsidizing the royalties on, on, on fracking and subsidizing uh LNG export of fracked gas to, you know, five foreign multinationals.
Yeah, um so, yeah, and I've uh, I've read that um uh BC BC employs less people per cut tree than any jurisdiction in the world that has forestry as a main, as a main industry. And the same thing is happening in uh in oil and gas, where more and more automation is coming in and fewer and fewer jobs are actually tied to every barrel of uh of oil or or um or kilogram or liter of, of, of liquefied natural, liter of liquefied natural gas. So even the jobs argument is kind of going down the drain on these, on these extractive technologies.
Yeah, what are, you know, what is a, what is an export pipeline for if not to just export unrefined product? You know, it's, 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 it's ridiculous. Here is a wood and drawers of water. We need to get beyond that. And also, well, I mean, this goes into the motions that I tabled. But we need to build that knowledge-based economy. And part of that, like, so one of my motions that I tabled in April was to eliminate post-secondary tuition. And that would be for all post-secondary, for trades, for um, you know, university, for graduate school. Um and that would put us on a level playing field with the Northern European economies that have been doing that forever. And so they have knowledge-based economies, they have a really well-educated workforce that maximizes uh you know, economic output for um for their countries and, and it works really well. And here in Canada, we have students going into huge amounts of debt to, to not just pay tuition, but to survive while they're going to school. And tuition fees have gone way up. Like, when I went to broadcasting school in uh the early nineties, a whole year, you know, cost me less than a course does now, right? And that's, that's a crying shame that, that people that are, that want to um transition to a new field or to get an education after, after going to high school uh should be able to, to do that. The other thing that, that I've called for over and over again is a guaranteed livable income. So that transition process is easier, right? So people don't fall between the cracks when they're making these decisions, that you have a base level of income. Uh if you wanted, if you want to take on entrepreneurship, for example. And the entrepreneur community, the tech industry thinks that guaranteed livable in- income is a great idea because it, it takes the stress away of, of taking a risk with your life to actually go into business. You've got a good, good idea, you want to implement that idea. A guaranteed livable income will make sure that you're, you're able to uh pay your bills while you're taking that chance. And then later on, you'll be paying back into the system, because if you're successful and you, you know, you're, you become wealthier, you're gonna be paying more taxes and you're gonna be helping the next entrepreneur that comes along.
So I've read recently, uh some people are taking the um, the SERB and the CRB experience as proof that a guaranteed livable income doesn't work because restaurants are scrambling right now trying to get uh workers and, and um and other industries are trying to get workers. And they're saying that workers would rather sit at home on the SERB. But uh but of course, people who, who have a little bit more nuanced knowledge and deeper knowledge about guaranteed livable income and universal basic income know that the problem here is because people know, people would, would get it cut off. They, they'd go into a, a situation where the restaurants, and not through no fault of their own, but have been hiring, laying off, hiring, laying off because of the COVID, opening shot, opening shot, opening shot. And so people are scared, some of them, to get off of the, of the assistance. But how would a guaranteed livable income be different?
So that was one of the problems we identified with the SERB right away, is that you're, you're giving people two thousand dollars. Some of those people ha- hadn't been earning two thousand dollars. But actually, what, what we've, what we heard from was that some families, the parents who had lost their income that weren't eligible, their kids were eligible and were actually helping to pay the bills. But with the SERB, um as soon as you earn a thousand dollars, you lose the whole two thousand dollars. And s- and so an incremental system that rewards work with a guaranteed livable income means that you have an incremental clawback. So the clawback isn't one big, you know, you hit, you hit this mark and then suddenly everything's gone. It's gradual. As you earn more, you, you get clawed back more and um uh it, it's, it incentivizes work. And where they've, they've done different studies and experimentation with this, and it shows that people will use the opportunity to enhance their education, to take entrepreneurial risks, to uh get back into the workforce. Most people want to be productive members of society. There are people who don't. And will take advantage of these kind of uh programs if they can. But you, you set it up in a way that um ensures that you incentivize work. And I, I'm, you know, I've known lots of young folks that um really be, you know, they want to be part of the, the workforce. Uh and, and people that are dealing, dealing with diversibilities like disabilities or barriers to employment who want to be engaged and don't want to just live off that subsistence amount that they get from disability PWD payments or welfare or EI or whatever. Because, you know, they want, they want to live the same kind of life that the rest of us are able to live when we work hard and, and uh earn good cash.
Would also likely mean that we get uh more people who can do uh citizen journalism, more people who can make documentaries about important issues, more people making art and, and, and investing in culture, more people volunteering and, and assisting in all kinds of uh non-governmental organizations, community, social organizations, environmental organizations. So there, there's just, there's so much benefit. And obviously, at the moment, our system isn't working. I mean, you look at what's happening on, on the streets of Nanaimo, and it's, it's a, it's been a disaster of, of years and years and years of, of underfunding uh social programs. And um yeah, something major has to change.
Yeah, this, we, we haven't been, we haven't been protecting people who need protection. And so then you end up with social disorder because people are in survival mode. And they are taking what they can, where they can, when they can. And you get predators, uh sociopaths who will prey on those people and use them for their own uh means. And, and it's the same like with the, the failure of the war on drugs, the closure, closure of uh mental health services and, and cutting of programs. All of that stuff ends up having an effect. And it's the same with cutting education programs. And if your, if your population isn't educated, then uh, then um you know, you lack people like Donald Trump.
So do you have, Dennis uh asked in the chat, um is there any optimism um that the federal government might actually consider um basic uh guaranteed livable income or basic uh income? Uh are there other, other nations who are trying guaranteed livable income as a result, as a result of COVID? I can add to that, like, what kind of conversations have you had with uh, with anybody from the government about these issues?
Well, I know um prior to COVID, uh it was just Elizabeth May and myself who were talking about guaranteed livable income in the House of Commons. And then we, we were um promoting it as an emergency way to make sure that nobody fell through the cracks. Because all of these different programs uh allowed, you know, somewhere, somebody wasn't meeting the, the criteria. And there was lots of people falling through the cracks. Um and then we started to hear the other parties talking about it. And it came up at both the NDP convention and the Liberal Convention, and it's become more a mainstream idea. And I think that that's, you know, where um a lot of good ideas come from the Green Party. We just promote them and, and talk and talk and talk and show the research. You know, when I ask questions in the House of Commons to ministers, I, I send my question in advance. I send them research to back up what I'm talking about, when I'm gonna engage in debate uh following a, a question in the House of Commons. I send them research. I want them to know what it is that I'm talking about. I'm not trying to play gotcha. I'm not trying to, trying to score political points. I'm actually trying to make things better for Canadians and for my constituents. And that's, you know, my goal, being involved in part, in, in politics. So I do think that there is an opportunity to move this way. Spain has, has moved into a guaranteed livable income system. They've done other uh uh experiments in Finland and in other places. And there are other countries looking at implementing this kind of um idea to, to make sure that uh, that uh the, the poverty is eliminated and that people, you know, have, have boots to bootstrap. You have to have boots to bootstrap.
So one of the debates that you had in the, in the last month uh in Parliament before the recess was a, was an argument um um, about, uh, switching from having, uh, gross domestic product be the main way that we measure the success of our economy. And, um, I was recently listening to, um, an interview of how gross domestic product has been completely decoupled from well-being. And the the pie is so, the the income pie is so unevenly distributed that there's, there's a handful, a tiny percentage of the population that benefits from increases in gross domestic products. And in fact, the, the rest of the population, as GDP goes up, people's, uh, well-being and and quality of life has been going down. So can you speak a little bit to that? And what was, uh, what what were some of the arguments that you were making about that?
And actually, this was interesting because, um, I got a bunch of agreement from the government in this debate. Uh, and they thanked me for like bringing this up again and working on this issue. Um, gross domestic product, just it, it measures the econ- the economic, uh, the 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 funds that flow from any kind of activity. So if if we have a major accident, uh, B C ferry hits a freighter and they, and there's a disaster, there's oil spilled, there's a huge rescue effort. Uh, ferry goes down with a whole bunch of cars on it. That is huge. For the gross domestic product, that is going to increase spending and that will boost the gross domestic product. Cleaning up the fuel spill, the insurance on every one of those cars, the insurance claims for people, the whole nine yards, all of that is is great for the economy. Divorce. Divorce is great for the economy because when a family splits up, it means that the the two parents have to get separate places. They're spending money, if they have kids, on going from place to place and having, you know, stuff, you know, furniture and toys for the kids here and furniture and toys for the kids there. If one spouse goes off the rails and burns the house down and crashes the car, even better. That's like huge for the, for the gross domestic product. But we know that if families stay together, it's much better for the children and the well-being of those children. If people are are able to to, um, you know, make a, make a relationship work and raise their children uh, in in, under the same roof and have a good, loving relationship. But that doesn't have the same economic impact as divorce. So, you know, those are just a couple of examples of how GDP works. It doesn't measure the well-being. It doesn't measure the education of your children, how healthy you are. You know what, your job satisfaction. It doesn't ma- measure the, the, the health of the environment, of the local environment. In fact, the worse the environment is, the more toxic, you know, chemicals we, we, uh, ingest, uh, the more toxic food we ingest, the sicker we become, the better for GDP that is. You know, because we have to spend money on healthcare, because we need to spend money on cancer treatment and and M I, MRIs and equipment and everything else. Great for the economy to have an unwell population. But it's, you know, so we need to be looking at, uh, GDP is not something that's going to totally go away, but it shouldn't be the end-all, be-all of 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 measuring how well we're doing. And, you know, when we hear stuff like, oh, this pipeline to export pitch, it's going to be good for the GDP. It's only going to be good for the GDP like the, for us, a small sector of society that have bought in a lot of shares, uh, you know, in the oil and gas industry. Because, you know, we all owned little bits of shares of anybody who's, you know, you put in money into CPP, kind of the pension plan. We own shares. If you've got mutual funds, you own shares. But the shares that I own aren't like the shares that, uh, you know, the billionaires own. They're the ones that have more control over the market and are benefiting from, uh, the gross domestic product for activities that are destructive to the environment. So we need to have a a different way of measuring things and we need to to, uh, value those things that actually have value to us and to our communities and make our communities better places and make, make our lives better. And that's the well-being economy. And that's, you know, the debate that I got in on, on that.
Yeah, so we have a few more minutes. There's a couple of questions. Uh, one other question here, we can tie into your, um, to the motion that you brought forward on old growth. It's from Sheila. Um, perhaps subsidies to retool the mills is something to put forward. And agree that, uh, she agrees with you as well that you, we need to ship more finished goods and less raw logs. So this might be a good, um, tie this into the motion that you put forward on that, on old growth.
Yeah, well, I had a motion to ban, ban, um, the cutting of any more old growth because we're, we're, you know, down to the last bits of it, less than three percent of, uh, the the historic old growth that we had in British Columbia is remaining. And that's like the big, big valley bottom uh, trees that we think of as old growth. There's other old growth sub-alpine. You know, just before you get to the rocky crags of the mountains, there's old growth up there where you can have trees or they're three, four, five hundred years old and only this big and they have no commercial value. Or there's old growth in, in, you know, uh, marginal lands, swamplands and things like that where the, the trees are old, but they're, they're not commercially viable, at least not at this stage. So, um, part of that was to ban the export of raw logs and to make sure that we, we maximize economic benefit for the second and third growth forests. I'm not opposed to logging. I love wood products. I just want to see us have a, have a better approach to, uh, how we manage our forest industry and how we protect biodiversity. And that means like banning, you know, things like glyphosate so that we're not killing off those broadleaf plants. Glyphosate is completely indiscriminate. It kills off ground cover, uh, bushes and things like that. It creates biodiverse dead zones that are, um, you know, not good habitat for, for wildlife, for animals, birds and and insects and, uh, um, we need that biodiversity. We have to protect that biodiversity. So we have to really look at how we manage our resources. And of course, forestry is a provincial jurisdiction. But we, we are dealing with international problems. The crash in biodiversity is an international issue. We've signed international treaties to protect biodiversity. We have signed international treaties to deal with climate change. And we need to make sure that the provinces have to adhere to the treaties we sign internationally. The treaties we sign for, for free trade, um, the provinces have to adhere to. So why not climate change? Why not biodiversity conventions?
Yeah, for sure. Um, so there is another question from Sheila. It goes back to, um, ties into the motion for higher education. She writes, um, I've heard that, I think in Ontario, post-secondary education is funded about twenty-six percent by government. And the rest is funded through charities and private corporations, so lobby groups in our education. And I guess that that goes into how that, um, money affects a resource, uh, uh, research and who ends up owning the research in universities and what ends up getting taught and what doesn't get taught. So what are your thoughts about all that?
Well, I think, you know, there, there is a place, uh, a small place for companies to be working with universities on research, but universities should be the one that own that, that, um, intellectual property. And we've, we've come to depend too heavily on, uh, co- corporations for post-secondary in, in, you know, education. And that does affect the kind of education that's happening. And we also see that affecting the kind of research that's happening. And, uh, we're also seeing that, that it's a problem in terms of, uh, national security. So we have, um, uh, the People's Liberation Army, uh, and their, and companies that are working with our universities on things that are, that have some security, uh, intelligence, um, uh, that we need to be more concerned about. And, you know, we see private interests doing that, like, um, in terms of telecommunications or, uh, pharmaceutical research, all kinds of different research that's being done where, you know, the, the intellectual property could actually help to fund the education uh, and the universities if it was done in a, in a better way. We've just given away too much to corporate interests.
Yeah, uh, Gary in the chat asks, um, political divisiveness is getting worse. Electoral reform could relieve this. Is there any hope still for electoral reform in your opinion?
You know, twenty fifteen was supposed to be the last first past the post-election and and it wasn't. And, uh, I don't think that this Liberal government, uh, is interested in this at all. Um, and I don't think that Corporate Canada is interested in it. And so, you know, the, the Business Council of Canada is really, what is the power behind the Conservative and the Liberal Parties? And when you look at both of those parties, their economics are much different from each other. What's different is, is social programs and social issues. But but both the Liberals and Conservatives have consistently been backed by the, by the Business Council of Canada before the uh, Council of Chief Executives, used to be called. Um, and they're not interested in real democracy because that's a threat to the status quo for them. Um, but proportional representation would detoxify our political system. And it, it is a toxic, toxic workspace. You know, when Jody Wilson Raybald talked about how toxic, toxic it is in the House of Commons, she wasn't kidding. Um, and the hyper-partisanship, um, just makes it really difficult to get real work done. You know, like, um, the Conservatives are blocking stuff that the Liberals are doing. But if they got into power, they would end up doing some of the same things economically. It just, um, they, they, yeah. I don't think, I don't see a lot of hope for it right now, but it's always something that I bring up. And I always like to point out to the parties, you know, when, when, uh, there was three Green MPs that if you took the vote of, of those three Green MPs, one point one million, it's three hundred and eighty-seven thousand votes for one MP. For one Liberal MP, they got five times as many votes as, as the Green Party. Fifty times more seats. And thirty-seven thousand voters elected a Liberal, fifty thousand voters elected a Conservative. You know, so, um, and, you know, the, the Conservatives got forty times, uh, more MPs for again, just around five times as many votes. And so the system is completely unfair. Uh, and it's also, you know, it, it means that, um, it's unfair in, in the, in the parliamentary system as well because that dispersion of seats, uh, means that there, that, uh, some parties have all the, all the, the power. And just, it's not a, a good way to run a democracy.
Yeah, so, um, before we, we're coming close to, uh, to wrapping up, there's a couple of things that we want to draw people's attention to. So on the, your YouTube channel, which, uh, I, I know may, all, most of the people are watching this on the YouTube channel. Some people might, might be watching this on, um, on Facebook. But on Paul's, uh, YouTube channel, you can see some of, uh, Paul's community conversations. And there were a couple of recent, um, uh, recent ones that we got really, really good feedback about. One of them was with, um, an MO journalist, Julie Chadwick, uh, who works, who writes for The Discourse. And what was that about? Uh, if you could talk a little bit about that, maybe encourage people to, uh, to check that conversation out.
Sure, that was about affordable housing. And that was, you know, I've had a motion on affordable housing and, uh, the homelessness crisis. And Judy's, Julie's done a ton of research on this. And so we, we kind of compared notes and talked about, uh, you know, what was happening, what had happened historically, where we're at now. Nanaimo has become extremely unaffordable. And, um, you know, there's a, the government needs to really step up. And, and it's, it's one of these things you could see coming a long distance away that we were heading towards an affordability crisis and homelessness just keeps on increasing. So that was a really good chat. Lots of good information in that.
Okay, we have, uh, uh, there's another chat, but first we have a couple more questions that have come in, late questions. One, Dennis, uh, has another questionnaire. Do you think the Citizens Assembly on Electoral Reform will have an impact, promising there were several, uh, there were, oh, there were several members from other parties on board, on board with it.
Yeah, I think that that's, uh, citizens assemblies are a good way of, um, examining, examining, uh, an issue, like something you want to move forward, especially when you're, you're bringing in, uh, people who have some experience or background or expertise in those areas. So, um, you know, it's, it's something that, uh, I had a petition on to, to have a citizens assembly on electoral reform. Uh, I've got a lot of people signed on to it. It's something that we're trying to push forward, at least so that we can have that dialogue. And so Canadians can can look at these different systems and, and think about it in a way that, um, that helps dispel a lot of the myths that are being perpetrated around electoral reform. And, you know, first past the post versus proportional representation.
Yeah, and another kind of related question, um, could you put forward a motion for the government to fund, uh, all political parties in an election? So they all get the same war chest. May the best party win.
Yeah, well, there used to be a per-vote subsidy, um, so that, uh, every, every party got two dollars for every vote that they received. And I think like that's a, that is a, you know, it's a good idea. But we also, you know, you match that up with another program to, to make sure that there is funding for parties. And people go, why, why should we be giving political parties money, uh, for elections? Well, you already do. And so when, when, uh, you know, you donate to a political party and you get a tax rebate for that, um, that's, that is tax money going to political parties. So it already happens, but a per-vote subsidy is a much fairer way of, uh, of doing it. And I think, you know, we've, we've taken good steps to ta- to lower the amount that people can donate, taking corporations and unions out and, and NGOs cannot donate to political parties. So that's great. But I think we also need to reduce the amount that people can donate to something that is reasonable to all Canadians. You know, your average Canadian, uh, might be able to know, donate two hundred dollars to, uh, a political party uh, or a candidate. And that's a, a reasonable amount. And then you just do a per-vote subsidy on the rest of it. And take the money out of the equation, uh, you know, and we can see where money has gone in the United States where money is, is, uh, political power.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of people wouldn't have actually two hundred dollars to, to donate, but I think it would be good to cap it at, at, at way, way, way lower. And lastly, um, I think, uh, I would like to, to speak a little bit about the community conversation that you had with, uh, Sinaius Chief Gordon Edwards and Counselor Gordon, Brent Edwards. Because we got really good, uh, good feedback on that. And I think it was also, I think Gordon, the chief and the, and the counselor really enjoyed it and were kind of surprised by, by what happened, uh, in that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, that was a, that was a great conversation and it was really, um, I asked them what they wanted the wider community to know about Sinaius. And I think that, that as we, as we build relationships and go through this process of reconciliation, understanding, um, uh, the First Nations whose territories we live on is really important. They started off by celebrating, you know, their grads. They talked about the economic development in the, in the area. They talked about partnering up with, um, you know, the, the MOU they've got with Lanceville. They talked about partnering up with, um, B C Parks Foundation and working with B C Parks Foundation and of the, for the purchase of the Bleanis Islands so that everybody can access those islands and, and, uh, um, and talked about the possibility of doing that in part of the, the, uh, the new slants for the D N D has at C F B, uh, uh, meter. And so it was a really good conversation. They, they, um, determined what it was that they wanted to cover. Um, we didn't get into some other, other topics that were, like, you know, more sensitive or, or controversial. Um, but we did, we did talk a lot about, um, uh, the things that they're working on and, you know, how well the community is doing. Their unemployment rate's really low and their, their, uh, members are getting educated and they're moving forward in a really positive way and connecting with the wider community in a positive way. And I, and I think that that's, um, I'd love to do, to do more of those just to, to help expand that. Um, so people can learn more about, uh, what's happening in our communities. Those community conversations were great, like. Um, so people can learn more about uh, what's happening in our communities. Those community conversations were great, like the whole series of them. But I'd like to do more of them with First Nations.
All right, I think that's a, a good note to end on. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody in the chat who, for the questions. And thank Lori for, for moderating the chat and for passing the questions on to me so I could pass them on to you, Paul. I'd like to thank you, Paul, as well. Um, this uh conversation, this town hall. Is gonna remain posted on Paul's um YouTube channel, so feel free to share it uh with other people who may, who may have missed this. Also, uh, stay tuned because um, we are in the process of booking. In-person town halls in different parts of the riding. It's been a long time due to the pandemic that we have not been able to have in-person town halls. That's a, it's all, it's, it was a promise that Paul made uh, um, to the constituents that he would be available for uh. For town halls on a regular basis and so we are in the process of, of booking those. And you can keep an eye out for uh, and it'll be in newspapers and on social media and on Paul's website. And so we, hopefully some of you can come out and, and see Paul in person asking questions. It'll be nice to, to see people again face to face.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to doing some in-person town halls. I really enjoy those and I like, you know, interacting with people and. And uh, they ask me any, anything kind of moments that happen. So thank you all for tuning in. Thank you, Alan and Lori for, for helping make this happen. And uh, stay tuned. We will be announcing those town halls coming up soon. Enjoy your summer. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, so PaulManleyMP.ca is Paul's website. You can sign up there for updates. And you can also uh like uh Paul Manley's MP page on Facebook. Thank you so much and have a good night, everybody.